Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council Joint Study Session with the Covington Economic Development Council and the Covington Chamber of Commerce Board. In compliance with state law, city council's special and regular meetings will be held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we'll call this study session to order, and we'll just go around the room and have everybody introduce themselves. Do we have anybody online? I see George on. We'll start with George.
Hi, good evening. I'm George Brager. I work for Green River College, and I'm a member of the Covington Chamber of Commerce Board.
Thank you. And can you promote Dana? And then Dana, we'll have you introduce yourself. There you are. You'd like to introduce yourself, Dana? Welcome, George. Okay, we'll go to start with Joe, and then we'll come back to Dana.
Joe Smomo, City Council.
Felicia Daniel, CEDOC.
Debbie Hartzog, City Council.
Kevin Grossman, Chamber and Green River.
Sean Smith, Council.
Josh Lyons, Co-Chair, CEDUS.
Jeff Wagner, Mayor Covington.
Kathy Bostard, CEDUS.
Beth Porter, City Council.
Bud Meyer, CEDUS, in Chamber of Commerce.
Jennifer Hartshaw, Healthing, Council.
Regan Bulley, City Manager.
Krista Bates, City Clerk.
And Dana, if you could introduce yourselves.
Dana Nuth, Covington Chamber and CEDUS Member.
Great. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for being here tonight. And we have a list of six items for discussion, so I'm going to turn this over to Josh.
Thank you. So a couple of things before I kind of roll into our presentation, which really just covers the bulk of our agenda. For CEDUS members, if there's anything during the presentation you think I'm missing or you'd like to include, just go ahead and chime in. I think that's the best way to do it. And then on the council side, if you have questions while we're going through this, I think at that moment that you have the question would be the most appropriate time to ask it in this in this particular setting. So one thing I'd like to say, just while we have everyone here, is that I really want to recognize and let you know how much how appreciative. First of all, I am a CEDUS, other CEDUS members that put in the time and work that goes into us being an effective group. But I'd like to single out Regan in particular for his support of CEDUS. No, I'm serious. Without Regan's support of this group, we wouldn't be nearly as effective as we are. He puts a lot of time and energy into us, and we really appreciate it. And I just want that to be said.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Regan.
So with that, let's go ahead and roll into the presentation. You can go ahead and go to the next slide, whoever's in charge.
I have a clicker over there in front of you.
Oh, right on.
It might be turned off still.
Look at that. So just as a general overview of what CEDUS is working on from an initiative standpoint, some of this was shared at the last meeting, I know by Kaylin that I was unable to attend, but we're just really continuing over a long period of time, but branding is a long-term commitment. We're continuing our efforts towards filling in the branding initiative that took place several years ago or was started several years ago with the new logo and colors and moniker and that type of thing. More recently, we adopted the idea that behind the brand, we wanted to present Covington as a clean, safe, and welcoming community, particularly centering that around the business community. So we have several initiatives that we're working on that are really aimed at supporting that idea. And I'll go through each of them, the Karma Collective, the Business-to-Business Outreach Program that we started this year, the See Say Do Pledge that I can talk more about, the Downtown Association Facebook Group, and then a police reporting diagram that I'll give some more details about as well. So first off, we're super proud. I'm super proud, and I think the rest of CEDUS is too. That karma really came out of CEDUS and a thought process around creating an ambassador for our city that we could work through and present as that image that we want Covington to be seen as. And so we're really excited about the Karma Collective project, which was us collaborating with the Arts Council. This is a program that many cities have endeavored upon in different ways. I was just in the city of Prosser last week, and they have Tony's On Parade, it's called, and they have a bunch of horses that are, you know, out and about, and they've been painted different colors and whatnot. I think what's cool about these programs is that more than just presenting art, they program them in some ways. So for instance, in Prosser, it was pretty simple. It was more, it was kind of a it was kind of, they presented a map, and it was kind of like a scavenger hunt that you could collect and find each one of the horses and that type of thing. There's a city in South Carolina that has a program called Mice on Main. It's a pretty famous one, and that's really energized and, and I think engaged and activated their business, their downtown little business community. So people make trips just to go find the mice on main. So we're, we're interested, we're super interested in doing something to that effect that would be uniquely Covington though. And that's going to be a challenge because that means we have to think outside the box and come up with some ideas around how to do that. But that's what our goal is. The Arts Council is super hyper-focused on the art itself, and I would expect that. So we asked them to help us with some ideas around engagement and programming. And I'm hoping they come up with some cool stuff. We'll see. We're going to meet with them again to some degree at some point. So that's kind of where we're at with that initial stages. Any questions about the Karma Collective?
Yeah. So thank you. Appreciate that. And I think finding a way to brand Covington and make it unique. Something I know we've been talking about for a while, and I appreciate all the work CEDUS has been doing with the potential to place whatever they are, you know, statues or whatever of karma. I would assume similar to others, you know, we'd allow the businesses to decorate those. But what I also, you know, kind of thinking outside the box is I think it'd be good to get one of those on each one, what are those scans called? The little QR codes on each one that people could scan that then either something like, you know, gives a coupon to that business, but also maybe downloads a file that then talks about some part of Covington's history or some part of that business. So it makes it interactive so that they could go around and not only be visiting businesses, but learn something about the community that you know, these sorts of things. So everything's on your phones now. I've even seen National Park units at their wayside exhibits now have the QR code. So for people that are deaf, you know, they're, they're working in multiple media into each stop. So I guess I would say if we don't do that, I think we're, unless it's really cost prohibitive, I think we've lost an opportunity. So.
It's a great idea. It's not, it's QR codes are easy, very easy to make and in place. And that is in line with kind of the ideas that I was talking about.
And maybe even in karma's voice or something, you know.
Karma have a voice?
I don't know.
I haven't heard karma's voice.
I haven't either.
Karma's a better listener than.
I was just going to nominate Krista to report, to report some things.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions or ideas you might have, comments?
What's the timing on that? Like, because I felt like we were getting close to getting ready. Were people that wanted to buy in one of those?
So at the, at the meeting that we had with the Arts Commission, we discussed a kind of a pilot kind of deal where we commit, we're going to do it. And then we do a small run of them to kind of get down the whole painting thing. There's a lot of I was unprepared for the amount of detail we were going to talk about for the, how we were going to paint these things. Or are we going to use vinyl? Or are we going to have rules about how you paint it? And colors and can karma have hair or, you know, like all kinds of things? So I think we're close.
So have we thought about with the, I really do like this idea. But have we thought about putting like special karmas in like the parks for kids to find to keep as a sort of like a little special things like?
Kind of like you have the rock.
The little rocks.
The little rock. Part of the kickoff theme.
Yeah. And then you can have and on some of those QR codes, you could put a map to with clues for them to find. Hey, here's where.
Totally.
It's like geocaching.
Geocaching, yeah.
Geocaching karma sort of.
Yeah.
You get to keep whichever ones you, you get to keep the one you find.
That's cool. Yeah. Cool. Good idea.
Just depends on how big of a budget we get.
Yeah, what's our budget?
Whenever you, however much money you got in your wallet.
Or donations.
I know that we did that for one of our park cleanups for not a city thing, it was an RIA one, but we had a couple of karmas. I just downloaded the graphic, put it on a piece of wood and hit it. I'm like, hey, find the car. I know it was something small, but it's easy and cheap and put a QR code on back.
For like 3D print them, like the Maple Valley. I have one of the Maple Valley Yoda at home from that whole COVID thing.
Really good ideas. Regan's writing furiously.
And just to speak to your, you know, having rules or I think, yeah, we have to have some type of guidelines of what they can and can't put on. Karma, you wouldn't want profanity.
No, no. And, and even like, so what was discussed is, okay, let's say we're a year down the line. A business has purchased one and it gets tagged in an appropriate way. How do we, how do we manage and maybe the business isn't quick to fix it? How do we manage that? We're talking about repossessing karmas. So there are some, to really to get back to the question, when is this going to happen? I think we exposed some details that we should probably consider. So, but.
I will say just back to Beth's question about timing, there's two commissions that meet once a month. They're doing this. So I think it's going to be a little while before we see karma through the ground. Just managing expectation, two weeks.
Well, the bowl is quite expensive from what I hear.
Most about eighty-five hundred bucks, and the neat statue is, was it eighteen hundred?
Well, and now we get to the, is it going to be four feet, five feet, or six feet? Because there's a lot of opinions around that.
The six-foot statue is around eighteen hundred and then it drops down.
We get a six-foot one, I'm putting it in Regan's office.
They have eight-foot ones too.
I mean, it would be nice if they were hollow, some of them. I don't know if they are.
They're fiberglass, yep.
So you could put it in a tree or somewhere crazy if you wanted. I mean, if it's on your private property.
Right.
It's pretty heavy.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, talked about.
That would be cool. That would be, I, I, that's what I respond. We initially had with karma, the idea that there would eventually be something like, what's that river monster one that shows up everywhere?
Musketein?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, then we need like.
We need one, yeah. We can do anything you want with the right budget. Map's kind of small, but I think, is this out of order? Yeah. This is, this map, you don't really, you don't need to see the detail. It's just representative of what we've done. This is our business-to-business program, so kind of all the colors you see just generally there. We've, what we've done is we've divided up the city and assigned different areas to different, to each member of CEDUS. And the idea is that we are going out and connecting with businesses within those areas. Mostly kind of on-foot intel type stuff, like what, what are you struggling with? What are you, what are you seeking, you know, assistance with? What would be really helpful? We're sharing some of the, some of the things we've learned over time in terms of some Septed stuff, talking about being proactive, which is kind of part of, additional part of this program I'll talk about in a little while. But we've been doing this for about, I don't know, what, five or six months now? We've had people going out and connecting and this is an interesting project because Covington, as you know, is more of an institutional type of business community. And what I mean by that is we're not connecting with a lot of the actual business owners most of the time. Most of the time, it's going to be a manager, which has has some disadvantages in the effectiveness of the program. So we're working through that and discussing how we can start to get through the different layers of management, maybe get to the owners and get some contact information where we can start communicating directly with them. So this is one of those programs that I think the investment is, you know, it's going to pay off at some point. And we just have to keep it up, keep going on that. Any questions on that one?
So is the relationship building primarily CEDUS with the business owner, manager, or it's not the businesses themselves interacting with each other?
No, this is us, this is us to, CEDUS to business.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that says business to business. So it's kind of, I see where you'd get that.
Josh?
A voice from above is speaking.
That would be Dana. So some of these businesses, I have some intel on. So is it possible for me to get a list of who's been assigned to those and I can tell them what I know? Because some of these are in-progress relationships or, you know, there's potential or things that I could help you know what to say or what to ask about.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. We have, we have a list of who's assigned to each region that we can get to you for sure.
Dana, if you just want to email me, this is Regan, I can get it to you.
Okay, thanks.
So part of our, one of the things we're doing through the Business-to-Business Program is we've, we've created the relationship or attempted to do so because otherwise this might be met in a different way by the, by the business that is getting it. What we're asking businesses to do is to sign what we're calling the See Say Do Covington Pledge. And in the process of communicating, we're letting each of these businesses know, particularly as it relates to some of our, the bigger issues we've been facing over the last couple of years, crime of being one of them, tagging another, that type of thing. We're asking businesses to do their part as part of a team effort of what's going on beyond them. And, you know, the example of Covington investing in someone that's really canvassing the downtown business core and making sure their, the derelict shopping carts aren't hanging around and garbage and that type of thing is being taken care of. We're asking the businesses to commit to a series of very easy to do things, to do their part, to be proactive and creating a kind of an environment that would curb by crime. So this is going out with us, and we're asking businesses to sign again. We're trying to get to the highest level of that business to make sure that the person that's agreeing to this isn't some sixteen-year-old kid that may or may not be there tomorrow. But I think at least I, once I've explained kind of what we're doing and what's going on outside of this, and that this is just them doing their part, it's gone, it's gone very well. If anybody else has something to say about that from CEDUS, but.
I'd say the genesis of a lot of what we're doing is that for years, we've been trying to do these things, and it's the city pushing this, the city pushing that. And this is really a cooperative that we're trying to work on now. It's not just the city, it's the city and our local downtown businesses that have to do this and that have to do that. And that's been, I think, a good shift that's reflected in a lot of what Josh is saying.
Yeah.
So just a quick question on the graffiti. Is that, I know that like Seattle, what I heard is that the city provides the materials, they just have somebody do it. Is that how we do it? Like, do we provide them with any kind of material for them to remove a graffiti or what?
You haven't done that.
No, just curious.
Whatever's being done, there's been a dramatic decline in graffiti in the last year or so. And I don't know if we caught one of the prolific taggers or what. But something happened that it's definitely changed. Yeah.
Appreciate this as well. I like the idea of multiple voices carrying these messages. I think it's still important, the city, you know, pushes these ideas, but the more businesses see it as coming from their own colleagues and mentors, the more likely it is to be adopted. I like the idea that CEDUS is now developing relationships with these businesses, at least contacting them twice a month or twice a year. One of the things I'd ask CEDUS to start in the chamber, maybe to start thinking about is how do we track the health or success of our businesses? So is there some type of, for example, GDP metric we can get, you know, that, that businesses are either self-reporting or whatever, and that is a way we can see if we're actually hitting or improving conditions here. So and then, you know, once we have that information, we need to get it transmitted to us so that we can use it to help shape policy. Because I appreciate just, even if it is just going out somehow, you know, during CEDUS's monthly reports or whatever, say, we met with this many businesses, here's the themes that we heard this month, just FYI. So some way of tracking their business, their success and whatever that looks like. I just wrote down occupancy rates would be one if we're having high occupancy.
Or turnover.
Yeah, that's not good, but there's probably other metrics that could be tracked that businesses would be willing to self-report. So anyway, and then I'd love to see, there's CEDUS GDP, you know, or happiness index or whatever we want to call it.
Yeah, yep. Sales tax information is a good one too. Justin Van Landchute often has a lot of that information seemingly at his fingertips that he'll pull out on us at times. So I'm sure he could help with us getting some of that information. And there's a, there's another piece in this presentation that is part of the See Say Do Pledge. As we were giving it out and talking with people, we realized that there was a need, and I don't know if that's the next slide or not. Well, that's fun. It would have been nice to have that up while I was talking about it. It's not this one. It's the next one. I'll, I'll come back to the See Say Do Pledge. But we have launched our Covington Downtown Business Association Group page. We have nine members. We have like eight members of CEDUS. So we're, we're growing. Felicia is actually managing the page for us and helped to set it all up, and we're super appreciative of that. This, this is a long-term project as well. This is part of trying to get to the top of the pyramid and getting the contact information and having the real conversations with the business owners. This is not probably a group for even high-level managers because Regan and I particularly have attempted to create relationships with some of the larger box store managers. And that's a really difficult slog. We, we just meet someone and we find out that they've been transferred to wherever. And so we're, we are determined to grow this group, but we're going to grow it in the right way. It's not just going to become some washed-out version of, you know, where people complain and, you know, you know, like whatever, name your next door or whatever your home community group is. But this is really a group of people that with real information and, and real ideas about how to. And by the way, this is related to the Downtown Association Project that we're talking about, really developing a personality, if you will, for the downtown core, being proactive against kind of the degradation of the downtown core once we have another bright and shiny retail sector that gets built. So it's all part of that, and, and we continue to do the work. And, and all of our projects kind of combine to support this, this initiative.
Is it private or public?
It's a private group.
Okay.
Yep.
Lisa bets anybody trying to.
She's the gatekeeper.
It's the downtown Covington.
Yeah.
So do we get in? Or do you not want?
I think, is there rules about that?
Well, we've limited it to downtown.
Okay, got it.
You gotta open it down to our business, Debbie.
Then you can.
Even though I have one.
There you go.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is what I was referring to when I was talking about the See Say Do Pledge. So one of the things that we were fretting about, and Justin talked a lot about it, is that at one point, there was so much retail theft going on that our retailers were just not reporting it. And we were super concerned about that because that skews the statistics and, and we want to know what the real problems are. And so the See Say Do Pledge came out of that conversation. If you see, say, if you see something, say something or do something. And what we did is we created a postcard that diagrams how to report a crime. And, and I know that sounds silly to maybe some, but it's really not. It's, it's it's a hassle to call 911, for instance, and wait three hours sometimes and, and then try and report a crime. It's not worth it to some people. So this is kind of giving some different ways in which people can report these crimes. And, and I think this is going to be an effective way to communicate that. So that's going out with us and being handed off to our businesses in our, kind of our beat the street.
I can talk a little bit about this too, and I don't recall if I've updated council on this, but I met with the director for the 911 Center in King County. And she said that there's been, this was mid-April, like thirty-three hours, thirty-four hours this year where they've actually turned off the non-emergency line because of staff. I think I did next to council. And so the other issue then was the amount of time it takes to report online. And I, I actually went to do it to try it out. I, I went to report an abandoned vehicle, and eleven minutes in, I stopped. It was just too much with, you know, they needed to know my gender, my race, my birthday, my this, everything. So I met with King County about that as well. I said, this is totally ridiculous. I introduced them to seek, like, fix, that, that might be a better option. And they said they could turn off some of those things because, yeah, we don't need it for a vacuum car. I said, you need a location and a picture. Like, that's it.
Totally.
And it should take me less than a minute. Someone else who was in that meeting said they had actually done the same thing, and twenty-one minutes in, they stopped.
Well, they have more patience than you, sir.
What's that?
They have more patience than you on that.
Yeah, definitely more patience. So anyway, those things are being worked on so that this, our reporting should be, should be better, especially on.
So can they change those filters by jurisdiction? So when you said they can turn things off, like assuming like filters of gender.
It wouldn't be jurisdiction, it'd just be within King County.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this isn't going to surprise anybody, but the singular topic that our businesses do want to talk about is crime. It is the, it outweighs any other issue they're facing tenfold, hundredfold. It is still a major massive problem for people. And so that's just in general, telling that. Backwards.
Good job.
There you go. Yeah.
Do businesses share what they're having success with and not with anyone, including each other? I'm just thinking about some of the mitigations or attempts at mitigation that I've seen some of our retail businesses employ to, I'm assuming.
Right.
Reduce crime.
Yeah.
And I'm just curious if they're using any of this as a, as a potential to, to network and, and share success stories or not, or, oh, yeah, that's expensive and it didn't work. Or, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I'm thinking of like the gates, but there's so many strategies that have.
Cameras, yeah.
And, and I see some places do them and others not do them. And it, it just seems like this would be a great forum for that type of dialogue.
Absolutely. Our, our online, our, the Downtown Association Facebook group is very much intended to be the forum for that kind of communication. Now it's just getting to the right people and getting the contact information. And I think we are starting to collect that in a, I think we have a few people that Regan might have, that we can start to engage and get onto the forum. And then it becomes a game of making sure that it's relevant enough that people continue to remain engaged in it. So that's when the real pressure. It's relevant enough that people continue to remain engaged in it, so that's when the real pressure starts, um. For, for us, um, Regan's made a couple posts, I've promised to and failed miserably. I got on Facebook just for this project. I resisted Facebook for the last twenty years.
He was off the grid.
And Felicia, I will blame her, made me join Facebook, but, um, I will, I will, I will grow as a human being. And I will become a Facebook expert in something.
I don't know if that's great.
Um, yeah, so along those same lines, I, I think that's a, a great idea, I'd like to see. You know, the city kind of dust off the speaker series idea and possibly, you know, facilitate or sponsor. You know, a, a town hall where businesses, like we did when we were doing the meeting for crime. You know, we just brought them in and we, we kind of talked about some of their issues and what they'd like to see the city do, I think it'd be great if you've got some business leaders. That have, would like to share their experience and say, this is what worked, this is what, you know, didn't work, and here's how we implemented it and, you know. I guess what, what I'm saying is, you gotta actually. More than unfortunately, just a Facebook page, you actually have to bring people in, you have to get them, give them a reason to come, and you gotta continually engage them. Uh, you gotta have snacks and then inviting someone to kind of talk about their experience, um. I think you'll, you know, we got all kinds of people coming to those town halls on crime and then. You know, and then, uh, if that starts getting traction, you could then change the themes to, you know, this is how we increase sales in Covington. And then we did these little promotions, karma's been outstanding, it's, you know, you need to get one as well, cause sales have gone through the roof, you know, I. I just think this speaker series, you know, and we've got these potential outdoor town halls coming up. That would be a potential thing to have, so, um, facilitating conversation, continually offering it. You know, prepping people, urging them.
Mm-hmm.
And finding those champions and then it's gonna start creating a critical mass that, you know, starts to take off, so.
I agree with you on, and especially at this level. I can say from experience of dealing with crime, it wasn't, it was maybe in our first three months that we opened our new clinic in Covington, this is twelve years ago now. Somebody broke out the front window of our business and tried to steal the TV and didn't make it, but, um, it was still a mess and. Dealing with crime as a business owner is kind of a lonely endeavor, you feel, you, it's. If we can create a situation where we feel like as a community, we're fighting this versus just on our own. And, and having talked to other business owners, the hobby shop next to us down by Big Lots area, they got broken into recently. Um, and it makes you really mad and you have no out, having no outlet to kind of, you know. Deal with that, it makes it really difficult, so I agree with you that having a community, community events where people can express. Even have a, just an outlet to express their frustrations and hear that other people are dealing with it and that's, that people genuinely care. And are doing something or trying to do something about it is a really good idea.
And maybe even something like a, this gets bigger, a community phone tree where they can start saying, hey, this is the person we had. Difficult, you know, this person was coming, and maybe they already do that, but just some way of starting to share that information.
That is exact, so the Facebook page, our intention is like, so Justin has this place covered with cameras all over the place. The intention is, is to get video of these people and put it up on our page and say, look out for these people beyond, you know, this is what happened. This is what they did, this is, you may not have thought about how they might have entered your business, you know, they.
That, yeah, exactly, that is their MO, and be on the lookout for that, they distract you and the other person goes back, so.
Yep. Yep.
We, as CEDIS, we've talked a lot about different, uh, events like that and, um. It's been really difficult, we did, our first one we did several years ago and no one showed up, um. Then when we started doing them on taxes and crime, people showed up.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, updates about the city, development, doesn't get, I mean, we, we had one planned actually last week. And we had between sixty and a hundred invites that went out and we had zero commits, Sam actually showed up. But he, he wasn't what we expected, so Sam showed up, so Sam and I met and talked.
Yeah.
But that was it, right? Um, and, and it goes, it's, it's one of the biggest challenges since, since Josh and I first started. Ready, set, play and beat the streets going down, it is just, our businesses, our business owners are so disconnected with Covington. It's really sad, honestly, and, and hard to get them engaged in what we're doing, so.
And they are busy entrepreneurs, are a very busy lifestyle. Um, I'm almost wondering if you just do quarterly crime updates.
Yeah.
And just, and throw in other stuff that engages and gets them excited, but really that's, we're gonna have pizza and crime updates. You know, we'll have a couple officers here, free to me, change the officers every time, so they get to meet everyone and then throw in. The fluffier fun stuff on top of that.
Great idea.
Part of our virtual BA, I've been pushing that, uh, onto there as well, onto the Facebook group.
But then they.
Kind of, right, yeah, well. Some of this, um, I think sometimes having a, a speaker helps, and then I, I know I can hear people saying, well, getting someone to speak or, um. Cost or whatever, um, I don't know if anyone's seen the movie Dark Waters, but it's about PFOS and, and the lawyer that actually. First brought out the lawsuit, he's from Pennsylvania, and I work on it at Ecology, anyway, long story short, I just called him and said, would you be willing to present? At Ecology, you know, obviously he couldn't fly out, he did it remotely, you know, he's, you know. Wanted all over the world, so I think there are ways that we're creative, we can create a. A event that is, um, attractive and you get a keynote speaker that, you know, um. Some type of person that these businesses wanna hear from, um, and I'd be happy to help, you know, kinda shake the trees for those. I, I have no shame in con people and say, would you do this for free for us, you know, and a lot of people will, because they appreciate the, just being asked. You know, he's a big time lawyer, he made, I think, six hundred million bucks on this lawsuit and he spent an hour with us, you know, so.
Well, you didn't need the money after that, that's fine.
Yeah, you know, there are always to make it more attractive and we have the technology to do it, so that, you know, they could spend an hour with someone. You know, that started with the one small franchise and now, you know, you get Ray Kroc, that, you know, talk about what he did with McDonald's, I'm sure. Fill this room with people.
It's funny that you mentioned McDonald's, um, I really, uh, got an eye-opening experience just talking to McDonald's from CEDIS. And, uh, just talking to them about their crime and some of their scenarios. And the ten to four shift is a pretty tough time, and they have everything videotaped, but they have their own procedures. And I think that other restaurants and other retailers might benefit by some of their practice.
Yeah.
It was interesting just listening to them, and I think that somebody from the city, somebody from CEDIS. Just kind of sharing some of their drama that they go through every week, every evening, that was opening Big Lots also, I learned a lot from them.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, having somebody from their corporate office maybe speak. And we invite people in to hear them speak and what they do, I think might be helpful and might be engaging for us as a city. To see how they handle that, because this is a problem that they have across their industries, and so, and most of their people that work. Uh, shift work or in the evenings, they're teenagers, uh, they're, uh, young citizens here in Covington. And so it's interesting to get their perspective and to get them engaged, that's a good idea, thank you.
Yeah, I would be fascinated by that, obviously.
I mean, thinking like the district managers too, because they, they're, they have, they see it regionally and they hear all their store managers and might be able to, you know.
One of the issues though, like compared to, like the district manager for Fred Meyer would say, Covington? Oh, that's saying remotely on our radar is a problem. We got Auburn, like, we got a deal about Auburn when we sat down with the Covington managers, like, you think you have problems here, let me tell you about Auburn, or. Yeah, so.
Safeway too.
Yeah.
Yeah, talking to Jason, yeah, he said Covington's peace gate.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, yeah, like, and why is that?
Yeah.
What makes, what makes our clientele different from Auburn? You know, cause it, if it, if it's not just Fred Meyer that sees it, but Safeway that sees it. I mean.
It's a good question.
What, what are, what are we, how are, I was gonna say, what are we doing right, but how are we different? I mean, we don't know what we're doing, you know.
Homeless.
Yeah. Ride the train, the bus station.
But see, that's a good anecdote and question, because it, it gives us a sense of what we don't want. And have to pay really careful attention to those elements that we feel might be impacting Auburn.
Right.
Or Kent or Renton versus Covington, yeah.
That's, that's a good point, yeah.
That's a really good point, it's not just that homelessness is unsightly, there's clearly a parallel.
Yeah.
Well, this is, uh, kind of a little bit, we'll end it on a, on a higher note, not the downer of crime, so, um. We are, we are helping and working with the Chamber, particularly, um, Dana and Diana, who is on our CEDIS group. Uh, have put in a ton of work, uh, to create and launch Covington's first ever Covington Restaurant Week. Uh, that starts on May twentieth, runs through the twenty-eighth, uh, I think there are. Just exactly enough restaurants that you could go to each one every night.
Yeah.
Uh, which is super convenient and, um, you know, this is just another thing, obviously a lot of other. Uh, cities do this or even regions, but, um, for Covington have its, have its own, it's pretty cool, and I know. Dana has shared that the businesses that are involved here feel super grateful for the attention and the efforts to support them. And, um, I think it's gonna be great and, and this is just the first one, uh, it's going to grow, uh, certainly. And these are the kind of things that, by the way, a lot of people are like, well, why don't you go get, uh, you know, name it, Olive Garden tends to be the biggest one or something like that. Well, first of all, we can't go get them, we just can't drag them to Covington, so you have to.
And make them come.
Yeah, but these kinds of things, this is the economic gardening that we speak of. When we talk about CEDIS and what the intention of CEDIS is, that we create an environment that somebody, who knows? Maybe there's an executive of all, at Olive Garden that somehow sees this through the social media platforms and is like, wow, Covington, look at this. And, yeah, and I don't see a restaurant on here that would even, that would be in the same context as Olive Garden, I should check that out. You know, whatever it is, so I think this is a spectacular thing to be doing, um. Hopefully everyone can find a way to support one or two of the restaurants involved, uh, and, and I think, you know, from here on out, it's just gonna grow, so. I decided, pretty excited about that, Dana, did you wanna say anything? Are you still here?
Nope, she's left.
You dropped, well.
This was.
Please note.
This was really an exciting thing and of course, uh, Diana from the, uh, Chamber of Commerce was one of the key catalysts for this.
Yep.
And, uh, there's been some restaurants that are gonna be new also to the Chamber, they're gonna be part of this.
Yeah, truly.
Steakhouse, yeah.
Uh, we're enjoying, because of the pro, because of this, yeah.
That's awesome.
It's a tremendous way to showcase what we have here, the food that we have, the panache, um. But, uh, in addition to that, uh, there are people that are actually changing their menus and Cosmic Bottles. Uh, they're going all the way out for this, and, and I would say those are exciting, and this is a great way to build buzz, especially in the summer season. To get ready for everything else that we're doing, this is a great way to launch all of that. And I, I thought it was just a tremendous collaboration between CEDIS, the city, Chamber of Commerce, and of course, the businesses that are sponsoring this, it's great.
Yep, good stuff on this one, I'm excited to hear how it goes, but I, I think it's gonna go really well.
Is there, I think I've seen this on a Facebook post, the Chamber has the Facebook post that we can share with other groups in the community and, yeah, that's right, I saw it.
Yep, and I think the city is pushing out some information.
Yeah.
And then, isn't there a kickoff?
Yes, there's a kickoff.
Monday, twenty, at the, the four-thirty?
At Cosmic?
No, right out here in front of City Hall.
Front of City Hall.
And that's open to anybody, like if they wanna come and get their passport booked, they, anyone in the public can do it, so we really wanna promote it as a gathering event, okay.
Yep, my family and I will be at each one of those on a different night, we already got it planned out.
At least you already got a plan, maybe the girls are already planned every spot.
They haven't seen the menu yet, if they've seen two of them, I do get.
They should eat peanut butter and jelly when they go home.
Yeah.
We were talking earlier about Druids in particular, I've been, I've lived out in this area for the last twenty-four years. And Druids was built right about the time I moved out here, and in the twenty-four years that I've gone to Druids for their restaurant. They have the very best chef they've ever had, uh, at this time, no, hands down, not, not even a debate. So I would highly encourage people to give them a try.
And if it's a really pretty day.
Yes.
Get there early and get a table on the back patio, and you can watch people come in and finish playing golf and you can look at Mount Rainier. Absolutely. My favorite spot.
Yep. Yep.
It's one of those restaurants that's kinda out of the way, and it's, you know, we just don't drive by it all the time, so you forget that they're there, this is a very good reminder that they're there.
No, I live.
And with that, the only other thing I have is I'll go back to, I'll go back to, if it lets me. This map, um, we actually, last year for this meeting, we had a similar map up. And we noted the enormous amount of parking area in our downtown core. And we talked about how in all ways, shape or form, activating these. The sea of concrete areas, that, these are the places that breed bad behavior. Uh, and when there's more activity within some of these areas and we activate them intentionally. Perhaps we reduce crime, we create more energy and activity. Um, some of the things we talked about last year, um, at this time was, um, some sort of food truck roundup concept. That, that, you know, could happen and is there a, is there knowledge of, you know, I don't even know what the rules are around. Doing something like that, uh.
So like on a Friday night or something, have a bunch of food trucks come to the Safeway parking lot?
Right.
Over by the new Chipotle, that's not done yet?
Rest in peace, Arby's, I love Arby's.
I know.
I was sad to see them go, me too, I knew ahead of times that they were going, I was like, no. Um, the bronca berry sauce is so good, so the, the other idea was that. Um, for instance, that we have long had a landowner in Covington that would matter-of-factly put a coffee shop. Uh, in their parking lot, there's room for it, it could not be a walk-in. It would have to be a drive-through and current city code says, no, 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 you can't do that, um.
Which parking lot?
Where, where actually it's where we are.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Big Lots.
Yeah.
So, and it's, and this to Rob's point, there is a big problem with crime between basically the big five store and McDonald's.
Yeah.
That tends to, at the timeframe in which you are talking about, draw nefarious crap.
Well, the cash machine, shooting.
Yeah, and the idea is, oh yeah, well, no kidding.
Yeah.
It wasn't that long ago, it's, somebody was shot there.
Yep.
Um, having more businesses in a more compact area brings more people, more activity. I understand that there's some ideas around drive-throughs and the way they look, but crime's way worse than drive-throughs in my opinion. And having people coming and going for the purpose of buying coffee is a good thing in my opinion, so, um. We would, we would like to, if there's room for discussion in the next ten minutes, talk about other ways that we see that we could. Think about activating our parking spaces or even, um, some of the coding that exists and what our options might be around that. Um, to make just a little more pliable for, for these landowners to, to work around and do things that make sense.
One of the things that we're talking about, and this is with, uh, uh, Justin and, uh. Uh, Brogan, uh, from Cosmic Bottles is perhaps doing a type of farmer's market. Do some launching of it, maybe three times this summer, and see what kind of interest develops.
In, in one of the parking lots?
In one of the parking lots, and the one there at Big Lots, that's a potential parking lot and.
Especially on the weekends.
Especially on the weekends, the city center is moving that way, we don't have anything like that, and we have one of the best models. For a farmer's market in the state, right next door in Maple Valley.
Yeah.
And we probably see a lot of their vendors here too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we used to have a farmer's market and craft.
Yeah.
Show, craft fair.
I've talked to some of our city, um, uh, I, I've talked to a few people here in the city about. What would it do to license something like that, or how could we launch it, they were very interested too. What would it do to license something like that, or how could we launch it? They were very interested too. I would say I thank you, Regan, for the connection for that. That's something that we're in the talk stage now, we'd like to do something probably this summer.
Same lines, I was just in Boston, um walking the Freedom Trail and they had a street blocked off just for that, for a farmer's market. And so, I mean, obviously it can be done and if you've got a, a business owner be willing to. Cordon off part of their parking lot, I, I think that wouldn't be too difficult to do and it was basically, you know, like any other market up. And then down that evening, so um and then if it takes off. Do it through the summer, I wanna make sure that it doesn't compete with too much with our makers market. Obviously, it can have some overlap, but if it would be dedicated to, you know, real farmer stuff, that would be probably great.
I might even, I don't know if you all thought about the timing of it, but I think that one that I used to see signs for, never did see the market was like on a Thursday. So it wasn't on a Saturday to compete with. That's gonna be, you know, you can't, everybody's there, but it, and you know, a random night in the middle of the week is.
Together with the food truck thing. Friday night food trucks and farmer's market.
Doing that on our town center site, there's been some discussion about that, so that does take it away a little bit from the, you know, the parking lots.
But you could not violate it there until we get ready to see how it would go, cause if it's aimed at increasing activity in that area. To dissuade some of these negative things, then if it goes well, you know, you can move it or.
There's a couple of different parking lots you could do too, the, the Big Lots, park at your parking lot, you could do it in the, um the far end of the Coles parking lot. Cause that's not that busy, um the Safeway parking lot, you could take, you know, we could dedicate part of that to sell fireworks. We could definitely dedicate some of that to food trucks one night a week. And then I'm thinking southwest of my house burned down due to fireworks, that's why I make the fireworks joke, okay? Got it? Every time I see one of those stands, I wanna just light it up fire, can you blame me? And, and then the parking lot that would be southwest of the Mexican Puerto Vallarta, I think, restaurant, there's a parking lot right there. Yeah, between Costco and the Puerto Vallarta, that might be, and it's kind of self-contained, kind of.
So we would, I think we'd get a lot of cooperation from the businesses and landowners if we had some ideas about doing that. I would say the, the problem in these, with this, some of this stuff is that CEDIS does not have the manpower. To even remotely start thinking about pulling this kind of thing off, like this would have to be generated maybe out of the chamber or, I don't know. If it, you know, the parks program could start trying to put on events, uh that type of thing. All really good ideas and I think that landowners and businesses would certainly support it, yeah.
I was just gonna say, if we're gonna be talking about this too, so we've heard, we've heard things from people who live along. Uh Wax Road heading down towards Covington, so we could even host, host it there at the uh city property where City Hall.
Where would people park though?
That's, they could park at, they could park at Big Lots and walk down.
There's parking.
There's some parking there, there's, there, we'd have to move some uh.
Could you, could you park at the, uh at Valley and walk over?
The only thing you have to worry about is that each of these restaurants and businesses have it in their lease. Where farmers markets cannot be there or food trucks cannot be on that.
No, he's right.
One of the things back to what Josh wants to know, the drive-through, and this lot's probably been a place, you might remember Jeff, maybe for about twelve years or so.
At least.
Longer.
Yeah, I think it was.
Two years before I got here, so it's, it's pretty, this isn't, this isn't our zones, these are our business, business walking zone. But roughly, it's just this area right here that does not allow drivers.
That does not allow what?
So like Josh talked about in Big Lots right here, it's not allowed here cause it comes up like this. So Fred Meyer, you could put one, over here you can put them there, there's rules, you have to be screened and stuff like that. But it's not allowed in that, which is um, it's our town center zone and they're, they're not allowed there, so. I think that's what you were getting to, Josh.
Yeah, well, and it, and it has interesting effects, like I'm somewhat joking, I do really like Arby's, but we lost Arby's because. That was an existing building that they're now gonna be able to put a Chipotle on and keep the drive-through. Where there's plenty of room in that parking lot, they probably could have put another building and may have. Um but, so they're can't, we're cannibalizing certain businesses and it's happened a couple of times in the same area. Uh Chick-fil-A maybe, I don't know how that one worked, but um we wanna, we just, I think the question is, is why? And are, is, does this make sense or is this a relic of an idea that existed before that is no longer going to play out? And are we hamstringing our landowners in doing things that make sense?
I think it's something that we need to bring back to planning because it's, oh, it's gotta be at least fifteen years old. Cause there used to be a drive-through photo map right there in that parking lot.
I remember that.
I remember that.
So I, I guess, I mean, the ideas around the short-term activation are great, but it seems like also. There's this question of sort of long-term, right? Is, is, is the zoning and is the vision for Covington to, you know, have. You know, parking lots and retail in the core or, you know, is there a vision to have it more be integrated with housing and whatnot? Cause it seems like most of the new projects that are getting built have, have gone the other direction where they're integrating the housing and they're. And the housing then makes it a twenty-four hour e- environment instead of retail, which is kind of four hours in the day. So I, I mean, I, it's your, it's your city. It just seems like it'd be worthwhile conversation for the, the whole plan, like you said, with the plan, kind of the whole planning process. Just personally, I'm not a big drive-through fan just cause I walk everywhere, but um, well, not up here, but that um, it's not super walkable there. And so it depends on where you're trying to take your city.
I think that is the plan, is that. Density more at ground level, it's retail.
In, in that town center zone.
And we also, I think, had talked about one point as those areas are redeveloped, that businesses would need to move themselves closer to the street. So that this sea of concrete is not as visible, so that it changes kind of the dynamic. So that is the long-term vision, but it takes time. Takes a long time, yeah, I was wondering about other things you could do, maybe you can't, if you can't do. Uh farmer's market or, or uh food trucks, you know, I'm gonna talk to this, but. I mean, you could do events in these, we've done them before, but you know, maybe some geared toward those businesses, so you have a karaoke night, something there. I was thinking, what is something that would drive the. People that, you know, are potentially looking to do nefarious things out, and if it's young kids, just what. Adults singing is gonna drive them.
Karaoke from the eighties, baby.
Pure crime with karaoke.
They do karaoke. Or you could bring a band in, I think for some of those, I don't know what the rules are for having potential beer garden, you know, something that. You know, you get one or two drinks and you sing karaoke until eleven o'clock at night and all the kids are like, McDonald's is not the place to hang out.
Go to Auburn.
I just, there's gotta be ways around this that's, you know, if we can't do farmer's market and food trucks, how about, you know, singing.
Do those, do those rules apply to the um Coles parking lot, the food truck thing?
We don't know, you'd have to look through.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, is there a way that we can get our hands, I know leases can be private, but if we're promoting this with potential. It'd be nice to know where the red zones are that we can't do.
Yeah, we can find out what the restrictions are, for sure.
And then just one other thing, I know this, it's kind of outside the downtown area, but the whole Ulta Home Goods, that whole area is not really on here and I know it's technically not.
Yeah, it's number seven.
I thought that was across the street, oh, it's got Marshalls and. Number seven, Cubes, Marshalls. Oh, Duffy's and Cal.
I wanna thank you all very much, this was great, great information, really appreciate CEDIS bringing this to us. And definitely uh some great ideas, looking forward to seeing how this moves forward. And thank you all for all that you do on CEDIS and uh appreciate you. With that, this meeting is adjourned.